Alright, everyone, let's open the meeting. Do you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Good evening, and welcome to the August 7th, 2023, meeting of the Zoni Board of Appeals, or ZBAA. First, let me introduce the members of the ZBAA present here this evening: myself, Chairman Alan Donnelly; our Secretary, Ms. Janet LaForsa; regular member, Commissioner Lisa Temple; regular member, Commissioner Nahid Kaiser; alternate Commissioner, Mr. Larry Rushmeyer is here with us this evening; alternate member Commissioner, Mr. Elijah Hewling is with us this evening; alternate member Commissioner Richard Briggs is currently absent for now, but I think he's gonna be here. Our, our... Commissioner, Richard Briggs is here with us this evening. Thank you very much. Our zoning enforcement officer, Mr. Fran Lally, is with us this evening; and our always excellent recording secretary, Ms. Cassandra Varian, is here this evening. Absent tonight, Vice Chairman Carl Hanger. The current agenda can be found here, at the table, or on the town website, under Board Meetings. When we begin the public hearing, I will call each applicant one at a time. When I call the property address, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail. After, the Secretary will read into the record any communications we received in favor or opposed to the application. The Chair will then entertain questions of clarification from Board members concerning the application. We will then hear from those who wish to speak in favor of the application, followed by those who are opposed. Following each side of the question, the applicant will be allowed to make concluding remarks. After we have gone through all the cases on the agenda tonight, we will close the public portion of the meeting, and will deliberate an open executive session. You must have at least four affirmative votes to have your appeal granted. The final decision may be in the form of approved as submitted, approved with stipulations, or disapproved. All questions and comments must be directed through the Chair. Please be assured that everyone will be given the opportunity to speak. However, the Board is most interested in hearing factual information relative to the application, and in view of time constraints placed upon us, we ask your indulgence in not reiterating comments previously presented. You are welcome to stay until the end of the meeting or contact the Land Use Office in the morning. Thank you very much. Okay, before we begin... Let's see. We're missing one member, Vice Chairman is out. So, we're gonna have Commissioner Hewling. Would you be on Z-23-35, our first case this evening? Thank you very much. Commissioner Briggs, would you please be on Z-23-28 this evening?
Yes.
Thanks, sir. And Commissioner Rushmeyer, would you please be on Z-23-43 this evening, sir?
Yes.
Okay. And Commissioner Temple, would you please be Vice Chairman this evening?
Sure.
Okay. First thing on the agenda... Is minutes, the previous minutes. Elijah, you were at the last meeting?
Yes, sir.
You want to be on the minutes here? Okay. Let's take a, take a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second? Okay, is there any discussion of the prior minutes? The July 10th, 2023? I have a little bit. Does anybody have anything on that? Nothing? Okay. Couple little things. Thank you very much whoever put the line designations down the left-hand side, because that's pure genius. Line number 28, where it says was an acting member for three, it's Old Woods Road. So, we'd like to put "old" in there. Okay. And line, this, this is an addition that was missed. I did double-check in the video, so I know this is correct. But on line 120, I'd like to add, the Chairman asked the applicant to please come forward, discuss and approve the map he drew while visiting the property. Chairman Donnelly discussed the numerous ledge he found at the location, the well location on the property, and the new septic system on the property, to which Mr. Russell confirmed the accuracy of the map. Could I please add that? That would be around your 120 on there. Next one is very small, line 134. It was the ledge and the well, and I did double-check that in the, in the video. So, it's ledge and the well, which were the hardships, and I thought that was important, that we had that on there. Next one is... I don't really see the hardships on here. About line 70, and the hardships, this is line 170 on here. Non-conforming, upzoned lot, unique shape of property, well, and septic. I didn't see if the hardships, I thought they should be in there. And then, I think that's it. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as of today.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Alright. We're gonna move on to continued public hearing, which is three Old Woods Road. Application number Z-23-35, Mr. and Mrs. Pereira. And that is, just gonna read the variance out here for the start. That is for a two-car garage, I believe, 26 by 26, and it's looking for a 25-foot variance, which is Article 3.5. Would the applicant, a proponent of the applicant, please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us about your appeal in detail, sir.
Alright, first of all, I'm sorry, we...
Welcome to the ZBAA.
Thank you. Last hearing, we were unable to be here. So, our variance is for... 26 by 26.
Oh, name and address for the record, sir.
Wagner Pereira, three Old Woods Road.
Thank you very much, please continue.
Okay. So, we're looking to build a two-car garage, 26 by 26, and we'd like to apply for a variance of 25 feet. Is that right?
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Uh, no, we do not. I'm missing the piece of the hardship.
Oh, this?
I'm sorry.
This page right here?
Yeah.
You can share if you want.
Okay. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna cut off. It says wetlands and your property, 25 would be...
Yeah, topography well.
And, uh... You can, you can speak, sir.
Yeah, we have the, the well, topography, access, and wetlands.
Okay, this time, I'd like to ask if there's any Commissioners who would like any, to ask any questions about the applicant.
I think... That's a question?
No, 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 I'm, I'm...
The hardships?
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was my question, was...
Can you tell us exactly where the well is and where the... From here?
You can, can I look? So, the well is...
I think it's written there, but it's small print, right?
Yeah, probably.
And this is the driveway?
That's the driveway.
Right. Here. That's, that's...
What is up here? We have the walkway here. This is the driveway. We have, it's grass here. And the, um... The septic, because we're up there.
Is this one helping point it out to him?
Is this the back?
No, this is, this is a...
I thought it's about to...
Here's the back, and we have wetlands here and the woods. And we have, we have... So, we have the second floor, and we have our front fence.
So, there is no other...
No.
Location for it, sure?
Unfortunately, no. This, this side is, yeah, it's even smaller than this side.
Mr. Pereira, would it be okay to pull, pull your house up on Google Earth? It's good to look at a little bit better. I hope it's okay for you. Thanks.
Are you sure of the septic? Hank, is, on this path? On this is the well?
This is the well.
Do you know how many feet it is from the well to the pool?
And the garage is 25 wide?
26.
26 by 26. I have the septic out there.
So, if you attach the garage to the house, it would fit for the well and house, correct?
Yeah. Like here, we have, is it that? And then block this side.
If you catty-cord it out here, so if you're out, you can use it that way, so it isn't attached to the garage.
Now, Larry, should we hear you?
I'm in there.
I explained that there's room between the well and the house to attach to, to the house.
Can, can I speak as well?
Sure, yes, ma'am. Please come forward.
You have to come up and...
Come forward, state your name and address for the record, ma'am. Absolutely.
My name is Alin Carvallo, three Old Woods Road. I'm Wagner's wife. I heard you saying that there is room to attach a garage to the house. There would only be room for one car garage, the most.
But the width of the building, you said, was 25 feet, and the well is 28 feet, 26 feet. So, that leaves you two feet for the well.
In the back of the new garage, I mean? If I put it attached there?
On the side.
So then, when we come this way, we would have to...
To go in the same direction?
Okay, the patio that we just got the permit last year to build? We would have to go into the patio, and then that garage would cover, pretty much block the pool view, the pool area.
It's not large.
Did we...
That is not a...
Yeah, because last year or so, we got the permit to do the new pool area here, where we added the, the deck. And so, we added, you know, patio and everything here. So, it would be much easier if we were able to just, as we came down, I know it's not hardship, as I know,
It's straight in.
But it would make sense, have the garage right here, instead of building and making like a poor car garage.
Tell me about the topography around us, and, and around here.
There's no trees here. Is that what you mean?
Yeah, and what's the, I listed topography as a hardship.
The grade.
This, this side here is all wet, and this area here...
So, this is wetlands here?
Here it's wet, and then down here is also wet.
Okay. So, is this the only area that, I mean, besides here? Is this the only area that is not either wetlands or...
Yeah, to me, this is the, the only area.
That's basically, sorry, that's basically about where the mouse is, right?
Exactly.
That's where you're talking about. Probably the mouse is.
We should be still to the well.
Which is, I think Larry was talking about.
Still touch it in.
Yeah, I was talking about that.
Well, could be in the road.
Yeah, there's no minimums on that.
We're pretty limited in our authority. So, that's why we're trying to, for you to see if there's a...
There's an alternative.
Be able to help you.
Yeah, no, I just never felt that we could, you know, dig down and you'd know a lot better than I would, but so close to a well, you know?
Because right now, based on what...
There's footers because of how high it is.
But there's a...
The house from where the...
If you go talk to an engineering firm, or an architect, or something like that, they'll explain all that to you. That's not, that's not the periphery of this court at all. I'm just stating that the well can be in the garage. It's not a regulation, as far as closeness. Now, if there was a septic system, that would be a different story.
You're saying the south house over the front of the house, right?
Yes, it's right. But, because here, for example, the height of the land, the, yeah, it's, it's pretty much the same as the house, right? If we go to the back of the garage there, there's a big drop.
Yeah, right about there is where the drop starts coming.
Right here.
I, I did notice that one, I was like, I'll, I'll report it.
There is a big drop here. So, technically, if we go this way, there's gonna be very, like, large footers, or whatever it's called, that we're gonna have to...
This is here, we, we need to, um, do a foundation here.
Yeah, because the topography is steep here, and steep here as well, correct?
Yeah, but this side is...
This is fine, this one is steep.
But you're closer to the building, so you're moving further up the hill.
Yeah.
So, you're actually gonna wind up with less fill on the backside of that, because you're closer to the building.
Now, in this case, would, would you have more fill in the back?
Correct.
Yeah, it slows it down.
That's right.
And this is your property too, right?
Yes.
And that's very steep?
That is wetlands.
This is wetlands, and...
Yeah, all wetlands.
Yeah. It's all woods.
Yeah, it's the, this is the wooded area.
Any follow-up questions, ma'am? Anybody have any?
Is the height of the proposed garage the same height as the garage that's there now?
Um, by...
He's talking about here going across.
A loft. Yeah, it's a, a two-car garage, and then a loft, like a storage loft.
Yes, so it would be taller than what you have right now?
I don't think so.
So, you said 26 by 26, right?
26 by 26, yeah.
That's footprint.
Footprint.
Right.
Yeah, the height.
Do you know the height on it? Sorry?
I have the plans, but I don't know, um, off the top of my head, the height. I just know that it would be two levels, because of the loft.
So, approximately, if you were standing, this is standing at the end of the road, it would be approximately the same height as, see where my mouse is going across, like that?
Or lower, because the terrain is a little lower.
Because of the topography in the back there? Okay.
And you said you had a, um, a patio? Can you tell us about that? Is it built already? What was the situation there? You had to get a permit?
Evid, we did.
You can draw it in if you want. I don't have any, but...
So, this is the, the pool, the new pool that we put in, and we built a deck all around it, that goes all to this side of the house. And when it, it comes to here, and this here is the patio. It's, what kind of material is that?
It's, uh, papers.
We're supposed to point in the deck to the, to where that well is, or it's plenty, plenty away?
From the deck to the well, there is a way.
It, it's, okay, it's got a good distance.
Yeah, but, yeah, and we just built this, um, last year.
Anybody else have any questions? I just have a couple short questions for you. Thank you very much, Phil, I mean, for all the trouble. I really appreciate it. One of the things that I was gonna bring up was the topography in the back. This is the map I drew. Tell me if it looks pretty accurate to you. But roughly, right about, right about where that ends, okay? This, and it's really this whole thing from here to this side of the house. There's, I know there's a wall on the other side of there, but that drops 45, 50 degrees, I'm guessing. It's, uh, pretty steep. What would you guess?
It drops even more in the back.
Even more than 45 or 50 degrees?
It drops less on the property line.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that, on that side, where, on that direction, where the...
Drops a little less here.
Less, yeah.
Where it's steepest is from what, here over to here?
Right there.
Yeah, at the point of, of the existing garage.
Okay.
It's much higher.
Yes.
If, if it drops off, and you're gonna put fill in anyhow, the topography doesn't matter.
Yeah, it could go, the garage could go the other way.
You can pour more, you can take a, pour a higher concrete wall on the backside. The topography doesn't matter.
That was pretty much it. One, one thing I did, I roughly measured, um, if it's considered or not, that, that you might need 21 feet instead of 25 feet, because I could more or less tell what a property line is, and I measured over. But that's, it's about a four-foot difference. That's it, thank you very, very much.
So, meaning that they could have a, if...
If it was, then it would be a little bit shorter, on the sideline. Maybe four feet shorter.
Okay, so they could have asked for, just to be very clear,
21 feet.
They've asked for 21 feet instead of 25.
Yeah, according to my calculations, it was not right.
And also, also the, the distance of, of the well. We consider like six feet from the well to the proposed foundation. So, he said that the well could be even inside the structure, so then...
I, I spoke to Mr. Avery, who's our Sanitarian, and the code is you can build it right up to it, whatever you want.
So, you remove the building six more feet closer to the well?
Yeah, if you wanted to.
So, that brings it to 19 feet? Or even, even more, even less?
Yeah, the only problem for us to put the garage, in my, in my view, put garage next to the other one, is that it's gonna block my backyard completely, you know?
Yeah, you mean going out like this, right? Going out over here, instead of being...
Yeah. It's gonna block the sun.
We need to think too, cars coming out on both sides, you know?
You know, it's not the view, it's just, you know, the sunlight and everything going into the back of the house. It's gonna, it's gonna block it completely.
Your, your neighbors on your, this side, are they aware?
Totally fine. Um, after we sent those letters out, we waited, until people could have gotten. And we walked around the streets, we talked to every single neighbor, we know them. And we ran by them, and I said, hey, listen, we're tracking, thinking of putting a... And they said that they got the letters. And they're like, no problem at all, you know? And by the way, we take care of our property really well.
This neighbor right here, you spoke to him, sorry?
Yes, yes, I did. I spoke to them, and everybody in the street, actually, we spoke to. And, um, we take care of the property, and they said, I know you're not gonna make an eyesore and put, you know, colorful building and put a buil, a business there. That's not the intention, is to put something that looks nice, and, you know, add some room for us. Because his truck, as you can see, does not fit in the garage right now.
Just more truck.
So, is it because of the size of your present garage?
Yes.
Is it smaller?
It is smaller.
Too small.
You know, it, it is small. And I like to keep my car in the garage, and when it's two cars, his won't go in.
Oh, so you're, that's your hardship too, then?
Yes.
Okay. I was going to ask you that question, I think you already have to, for the garage.
And we have a child, so...
The picture's probably 18 feet.
And we have to bring him to school, we wanna make sure we are...
Right by 18.
I, I had a smaller one, and it wouldn't fit. This, this one is bigger.
And he's a contractor, so he needs a truck. You know, so it's not like you can drive a sedan.
Thank you very much. Anybody else have a follow-up?
I think I'm pretty good.
Anybody else have any follow-up? Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for sharing.
Uh, one, one question.
One more question.
So, if the positioning of the proposed garage, is there already a driveway going around the back of the current garage?
No.
Okay. Because that's...
He just turns and...
Because you guys have, you have on your stone retaining wall, and we're talking about the topography behind. So, how are you guys planning to get, you get, again, grant, if we grant the variance, how are you getting your truck, per se, around?
Oh, the new garage would be straight ahead, where, where you're looking. But like Larry's proposal, which is doable, would have it the other way. But there is that retaining wall. I forgot I did not measure that distance from, you know, the edge of here to where your retaining wall is. Do you know that approximately? That'd be from the edge of here, because his retaining wall, they gotta have it out there, because it's a, it's a pretty steep slope there.
I would say 18 feet.
About 18 feet away from that.
I'm sorry, where is that?
So, right here, um... Okay, you gotta, yeah, here's...
Right here to you.
To your question about the, the driveway?
Where we have it.
The driveway comes from...
Okay, coming the right way. Where, this is, is this the retaining wall?
No, no, this is, this is, um, um, it was like...
Yeah, this is, this is a wall right here, right? Okay. This is the wall. Okay, so between here and here, that's 18?
Yeah.
Do you have to build more?
But where's the patio?
Okay. Yeah, you, you can...
It's right here. This is actually the old map, because the new one, the pool, is a little bit this way.
You can draw that. So, that's the pool, that is now.
And the new deck is here. It wraps around.
It goes all the way around the pool?
No, no, just like this.
Okay. So, connecting from the back of the house, heading out to the pool like that?
Right.
So, if, if you go to an engineer, he'll lay that all out for you. That's not what this board does. And the questions about how to access, that's, that's up to the engineer in you. We're here to talk about a variance, and there are other options for you, for that building, for that structure.
So, we would have to go to the engineer before we come to ask for a variance?
That, that might be a good idea. It might be a good idea to go sit down.
If you even needed it after an engineer, right?
Right, you might even be able within, get it within your setbacks.
You don't think it'd have hardship enough for you to grant me the variance?
We want to close deliberations.
We'll discuss them and close deliberations. You'll, you'll hear us all talk about it.
Yeah, depending on the answer, then, it would be the, the next step, going to an engineer, if we wanted to pursue that. Because if it's not great, I don't think we're gonna do that.
So, anybody?
Because it's, it's just gonna break our backyard. If, if, if you, if we don't get the variance to build up, you know, going straight down, uh, we're just not gonna build it. We're gonna look for a new house somewhere.
There's options to bring it closer, though, to the house, right?
The only, yeah.
A little bit.
Well, a little bit closer, yes, but we don't wanna block the sunlight from going into the, the backyard and the pool,
I understand.
And the beautiful deck that we have built.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, so that, to me, is, is just... I wouldn't do it. I wouldn't do the garage.
Don't get us wrong, we don't wanna, you know, maybe they think this is bad, but we know that that's the law. If it's, you know, rented, we'll be very happy with it. If not, we will just...
And we would make it look great. It's a beautiful neighborhood. The houses around us are all very well taken care of. Ours looks nothing like it looked in 2017 when we bought it. We have done a lot of work, spent hundreds of thousands of dollars in it, and we plan to, to continue to, you know, make the neighborhood look good.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much.
So does anybody else have any other question, follow up? Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the application. Hearing none. This time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application. Hearing none. I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing on Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-five, please. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay. Next application is Z dash twenty-three dash twenty-eight. Damon and Amy Iannello residence. And this is to place a shed on the property, a twelve by sixteen shed. And you're requesting of a structure to the left sideline, ten-foot variance and structure to right sideline, a forty-foot variance. And then structure in the front yard, which is three dot four dot A dot three dot B. Could you please come forward, take your name and address for the record? Tell us about your appeal and repeal. Welcome to the Zone Board of Appeals, sir.
Thank you. Damon Iannello, Ten Lodging Trail Lane. You took a lot of my thunder there, I was gonna rattle that off, but essentially you were looking for three variances, to put up the twelve by sixteen shed. The reason for the three is because we're within ten feet of my one neighbor, forty feet within the other. And it's technically from the property towards the roadway. Hopefully you guys can see by the pictures attached, it's hard to see, but, they're not gonna obstruct any views of the neighbors. It doesn't offend upon their usable property. It's not like I'm trying to put a shed up against their, their rose garden or anything like that. Both neighbors have verbally agreed to, my wife and I, when we spoke with them, and have recently signed a letter that said they have no objections to the proposed placement of this shed. Sir, you came out and, and, and put eyes on the property, but...
Thank you very much.
Oh, yeah, thanks for coming out. You too, Mr. Lally, thanks for coming and putting eyes on the property. I think it's a little easier to, to see it versus everybody just having all this paperwork in front of them. We'll say a minimum of two hundred and thirty feet from the road. I know you got a different measurement than I. The driveway slopes down and the proposed placement of the shed is behind some evergreen trees, so it would be barely visible from the road year round. I can go over the pictures if you'd like, but...
Sure, if you'd like to describe anything, anything at all to any of the commissioners, please feel free, sir.
Okay. And then, um... So when we're looking at the proposed placement of the shed, obviously, I know it's not, not really a concern, but obviously convenience comes into play. Proposed placement of the shed is for our children's, you know, bikes and outdoor toys and some seasonal yard equipment. You know, the, it would be the west side of the property. I would still need a variance to put it there, because it's still within fifty feet of that, that neighbor.
You mean the east side?
Oh, I'm sorry, the north, north.
North, south, east.
Yep.
It's kind of the northeast side.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
So the north side would be, I would still need variances in most places that it would be usable. Due to the wetlands, the sloping topography. And then in the, in the rear of the house, which would be the south, southwest side, is the septic tank and the bleaching fields. So hopefully, I can answer any questions you guys have, but, I, I don't think it matters for, for the purpose of this, but it is a temporary structure. We don't have a plan on moving, but if we did, we would take it with us. It's, it's not like, you know, pouring concrete, putting something in the ground here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Did you say?
Chairman, there's a correspondence you may want to read into the...
That's exactly what I was gonna do next. Madam Secretary?
There is, there is correspondence in favor of your request, Mr. Iannello. One of them is from Stacy McLor...
Uh, McDiver.
McDiver, I'm sorry. Shed from Six Lodging Trail Lane. The Iannellos have spoken with me about acquiring a shed for their property at Ten Longing Trail Lane and showed me the desired location. I'm aware that it is within fifty feet of my property, of my property line and have no issues or objections to placing the shed in this location. There is also one in favor from the Robinsons, located at Twelve Lodging Trail Lane. The Iannellos have spoken with me about acquiring a shed in their property at Ten Lodging Trail Lane and showed me the desired location. I'm aware that it is within fifty feet of the property line and have no issues or objections to placing the shed in the location.
Thank you very much.
Yes. You're welcome.
Anything else on that, sir?
No, sir.
All right, at this time, I'd like to ask if there's any commissioners who have any questions at all for the application.
So I don't care, the whole area of the north, you're saying, would not be usable, this whole section?
So this is, basically, all this is wetlands. This is basically wetlands, there's a stream that runs through here. Yeah, pretty much. This is the septic tank and the bleaching field, these are here.
Do you have a wetlands map of the property?
Uh, I personally don't. I've seen it on the town website.
I brought it up on the G I S. If that's okay with you.
Yes, sir.
So this is the beginning of your driveway right here, right?
Correct.
Right here. That's wetlands.
How many feet is it from the back of the structure to the beginning of the wetlands?
So he's talking from here to here? If you have a guess, sir?
I don't know, fifty feet maybe?
From here to there?
Well, the wetlands come in. It depends on which, I guess, map you're looking at.
How wet the wetlands are at the time?
Yeah. And then there's a rock wall through there.
And the shed is how big?
Twelve by sixteen.
So fifty feet, that's plenty of room to put a shed behind, behind us.
Well, there's also topography, it slopes down and then it's, it's all wet, right? It's not too far off the corner of the house there, well, the corner of the deck, I guess that's a shaded ground. Not too far off the corner of the deck there is wet.
And you could pour gravel in there? Again, I'm not trying to tell you how to build this thing, but that's, there's a way to do it.
I mean, listen, I, I, there's always a way to do something. I think logistics also comes into play. My kids are not gonna walk down, down the hill, all the way around to the back of the, the wetlands to grab a bicycle for me to get a snow blower to then come all the way back up, push it through the stone and get the driveway. But, yeah, there's definitely other places to put it.
And encounter some wildlife along the way.
There, there's septic, I don't know, you see where I have the arrow there? That's approximately where your septic is, sir?
Uh, yeah, a little bit closer to the house, but yes.
It's about somewhere in this area.
Exactly, yes.
Bleach fields. So that's all septic right over there.
Correct, yep, and the bleaching fields.
I have a copy of it, if you're asked for. Does anybody else have any good questions? Okay. Thanks for letting me go up to your septic. Yes?
No.
Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Thank you very much for letting me go up to the house. I appreciate it. You got a map here, tell me if this is pretty accurate to you. So, and I pulled the septic out, that's right about here, which is where we planned out before. You have, you have the tank, it's closest to the house, and then you have one, two, three big bleaching fields off of there. So that is in the, I don't know, kind of called southeastern part of it?
South, southwest.
South, southwest of the part of it. Yeah, to the left, there's a facing front door, it's to your left and behind that. And then as you come up your driveway, here was, here was the part that didn't make sense to me and I did, I tried to speak to Mr. Lally, Fran, about the right sideline. The, the, the map, at least how it says in the G I S and on this map that we have, it says it's two hundred and eighteen feet from here to here. So this distance right here. But I measured twice and I'm pretty doggone close. From the beginning of his driveway, okay, right here, to where the location, I knew where that location was by your pictures there. With that little corner, I came up with, I measured one way and back the other way, two hundred and seventy-nine feet. I know that there's about twenty foot of the driveway right here from the, from the borderline, but it's still two hundred and fifty-nine feet up. But from right here, just tell me if that sounds about accurate to you. Yeah, that's where I measured, I measured twice. So from right here to where approximately where you wanna put the shed, it's, I came up with two hundred and seventy-nine feet. I did speak to Fran, I spoke to you about that, we weren't sure about the numbers.
The numbers, yeah. That map's not the scale.
So I don't, yeah, and this map is not the scale, so I don't think this two eighteen eight four number is completely accurate. I, it's, it's off by fifty, sixty feet, I think, even if you take the twenty off on that.
Are they requesting a variance for that, though?
Well, the right, the right sideline, that's where, and, and the front yard.
Yeah, Mr. Lally showed me that north front door is facing this way. It's, it's the front of the property is the property towards the road, so that's the front of the property there.
So maybe they should start with a survey.
Something's not correct on it, that, that number just doesn't look right to me. And I did have another question, which is a simple one. You know, when you come up to your house, I know where your well is.
Yes.
Okay, cause I saw it was kind of hidden behind the bushes there.
Yeah.
But why not put your shed, this is just a question, you come up to driveway, right? You got the piece of pavement right here. Why not put it perpendicular, depending on how the shed opens, or parallel on this side, which would be the north and kind of east, mostly the northern side of the property? That was my biggest question.
Yep.
What's wrong with that area right there?
It slopes down.
You probably won't need a variance.
We need it this way, so?
Depending on, yeah, I didn't take that measurement to estimate where it is, but you're...
It's fair, I mean, I would definitely need at least one variance, because it's gonna help, you know, I wouldn't put it directly up against us, I just need it first, and then the twelve, sorry, sixteen feet long, which I would still need a variance for that neighbor.
That was a front yard too?
It's, it was totally out of the front yard. It's literally right on the side. It would be on the side of the house, so where, the proposed location is here. This number, something's weird about it, cause I measured this twice and it's two seventy-nine and a quarter there. So this is much farther. But when you come up and you own this driveway, so this front door is here, so you come up and look into this front door, that's why this is the front yard. But on the, it was just an idea, just a question.
Yeah.
On the right-hand side of there, you, you maybe need a little bit of a right-side variance, but it's no front yard and it might be a smaller drive. It's just a question.
I guess it's probably not an issue. It's where I get my oil filled here. So I guess we can go, we can go around in the back, I'm not sure.
You usually, you usually have that big long hose and you just bring it from there.
Yeah, I just, but it's gonna be twelve feet wide, the shed.
I understand.
Up close to the house, it, it blocks the, I guess I have that a handful of feet away, which again, we still need that there.
I did notice a couple of things about your property. So you have, there's a lot of wetlands in the back there. I mean, a lot. I saw one that was out there, but you can see it on the map and be sure it changes depending on how wet it is. The septic, so that is on really the whole entire west, northwest side of the property. It's actually going from north to south.
The wetlands, yes.
Backside of the property. This is where the septic is, which is on really the southwest of the type of side of the house. So you can't do anything there. And the unique part of this property that is really interesting, when you come up this driveway, it's pretty doggone skinny here, but there's a, there's a rock here, you know, you can measure here, but this person's property almost looks like it's your yard, right?
Exactly. And then, I mean, it's easier to see.
It's just weird because of this rock.
And then my property cuts like almost onto her driveway, which is, it's just...
Yeah, at this point right here, right?
Yeah, that's where that rock is, but if you go further down, my property is like against her driveway, which is...
Driveways don't have septic.
I know.
It could be right on the property.
Okay.
I was just thinking the uniqueness.
There's also, it slopes down, I'm just pointing out, the lot lines are all odd.
You know, we're talking hypothetically about wetlands on a map that's not the scale. You need two things, you know, the survey should be done and they should come out and flag the wetlands and you'll know where they are. It just makes everything not maybe, I think.
Yes, sir. Does anybody else have any follow-up questions?
Mr. I, just to get back to the beginning, did you say you were gonna take the shed with you if you should sell the house?
Doesn't matter, the variance goes with the property.
Okay.
Right, but to answer your question, yes, we would take it with us. It's, it's, I'm not pouring concrete, it's just crushed stone, we put a shed on. I don't plan on moving, but if we moved, we would take it.
Okay.
You have to understand that a variance stays with the land in perpetuity, so it's there a hundred years from now.
Gotcha, a hundred years.
We have to, we have to think forward.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else have any other questions?
No.
Anybody else?
Who's going on?
At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here to speak in favor of the application. Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this application. Hearing none. Sir, you have the closing remarks, you can say whatever you'd like.
I'm all set. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing on Z dash twenty-three dash twenty-eight, Iannello residence. Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, moving on. So our next application is Z dash twenty-three dash forty-three. Erica Flores and Fabio Figu- Figueroa?
Figueroa.
Oh, thank you very much, ma'am. Residence, and this is two A Cross Road Brookfield. Place a shed twelve by sixteen on the property and you are requesting a structure to the rear rot line, a thirty-five foot variance, fifty feet made in, thirty-five feet variance. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record and tell us about your appeal in detail, ma'am.
Needs air floor, two-way crossroad.
Welcome to the Zone Board of Appeals.
Thank you, thank you for having me. So as you said, we're looking to place a shed twelve by sixteen on the property. We're asking for a variance due to several hardships, wanting to be next to the left of the home, art of fields and the septic tank. You guys all have this in your pocket?
Yes, ma'am.
And then we also put a pool and patio all around the pool this summer. And also we have wetland to the left of the house and back.
Where, I pull it up where?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And by the driveway, we also have a large drain pipe for drainage from the driveway that goes all the way to the back of the property line. And so if we ever had to access that, which it has gotten clogged before, or tear it up, tear it up or put something new, that would interfere with, the shed would interfere with it if we put it there, yeah. We have a very odd shaped lot. And I didn't realize that on this map, the stepback line didn't come out when I copied it.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
If you want me to explain anything, I'll move the mouse for you.
Sure. So you see where that thing is, it looks like a baseball field? But it's not. That little like green patch there? What used to be like a, previous owners had like a brick, kind of like a brick fireplace there. So we're proposing that it go just to the back and to the right of that, that is no longer there, we took that down.
About here?
Yeah, so, yes, and then I guess up more.
Yes, sir.
Up, now straight up, yeah. Yep. So we're proposing it to be right about there. We have been in contact with our neighbors. I did contact directly my immediate neighbors, who I think would see it, drive by, notice it, and they had no issues with it. I also talked to the owners of this vacant lot, the one nineteen A, which is a vacant lot. And he, I believe, wrote a letter of support as well as house number four.
I had that letter of support, Mr. Chin.
We're gonna read, soon she's done reading. Continue.
So, yeah, so to us, that really seems like the only viable...
Somewhere roughly?
Right there, yeah. I know I drew it in, but, I wish I bought my larger survey, cause you could see the stepback line. So the fifty-foot stepback line actually goes like into the pool area, it's like a very narrow...
Yeah, you're talking about here, this point?
So that's my property line, yeah, and the stepback is super...
It doesn't show it on here, but your pool is right about here-ish?
Yeah, and the fifty-foot stepback line actually goes like into the pool a little bit.
Okay.
Cause it's thirty step back for a pool, but, so although it may seem like there's some space back there, there really isn't. It's a very narrow kind of backyard. And then it's also surrounded by a rock wall before you get into the wetlands and it slopes down.
Thank you. All right, Madam Secretary?
Yes.
Any other questions?
We only have one letter.
I think there's two.
There's two uploaded to the portal.
Here's one.
I have from, it was sent to Mr. Lally.
Yeah, those are the two I have.
I don't think I have that one down. Okay, I'm sorry. This is from Joseph Veece. Fran, I hope all is well for you today. My name is Joe Veece and I live at Fourth Cross Road, Brookfield, and I'm writing to you today as my ne- as my neighbor Erica Flores and Fabio Figuero-?
Figueroa.
Yeah. Of twenty, of two A Cross Road, Brookfield, have filed with your office for a variance to Article three point five, three point five shed. Okay, I understand you will hold a public hearing to this request on August seventh. However, we cannot make the hearing. I wanted to express our full support of Erica and Fabio's request into your office and would ask that you support and approve their variance request. If you have any questions or need anything further from us, please feel free to reach out. And this is an email sent to Amy from Karina Ches- Cheslow. And she says to whom it may concern in the matter of a two, in the matter of the two A Cross Road variance application, we support the Vigorillo's variance to add a shed. If you should have any questions, please contact us at, I won't say the number. Sincerely, Karina and George Chesso.
Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Also, Mr. Greenberg came over, I don't know if you guys heard from him at all, I think he came down to the office.
Which, which house is he?
He's...
He's one nineteen.
He's one nineteen.
Okay, this vacant, vacant lot owner?
Nope, he's one nineteen, oh, that one nineteen A is the letter of support that you just read.
Gotcha.
Yeah, Mr. Greenberg contacted me, asked me if he could come over and take a look. And I went there and explained it to him. He wasn't sure why he was there and I said, well, even though you don't touch my property, you're a hundred feet of my property line. Okay.
So he was, he was okay with it?
He did come in the office, he was okay after I explained it to him.
Yeah, I said, if you have any further, if I'm not explaining correctly...
Can we write down his name?
He probably got the letter, right, that's why he...
Yes, yes, and he called me, yeah.
If he came in the office and did, that's good enough for us, thank you. If he came in the office and did that, that's good enough for us, thank you.
What is his name?
Uh, it was Mr. Greenberg, I don't.
Greenberg?
First name, 'cause I think it was, it was estate of. Yeah, and I hadn't heard from anybody else, so I assume.
Thank you very much, thank you. At this time, I'd like to, uh, ask if there are any commissioners who have any questions for the application.
Um, yes, sure. What is that pink brick titled?
So that's like a PVC small shed that was there by the previous owners. It was kind of dilapidated and falling over, a tree fell on it, so it's a little wonky right now. We're gonna get rid of that.
Can you use that, at the spot, for a new shed?
It's, it's actually within the stepback. It's within her 50 feet, um, on 4A Cross Road.
It's an existing structure, right?
Yeah, I don't know if there was ever.
Might be a pre-existing, non-conforming. Did you see it? Mr. Lawley, when you were out there?
I did.
You did. So it's probably a, whatever serves as a.
It's an old, like, rubber-made, whatever, tool shit.
And that's, that's coming down, keeping it, or?
No, it's coming down.
Coming down.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. To any other commissioners, if you have any questions.
There's no other place in your backyard that would meet the stepback requirements?
Yeah.
You couldn't move it closer to the house? Up the hill?
Up where, sorry?
Closer to the house?
No, 'cause I have a drain that runs.
You're talking about in here?
Yep.
Yeah, I have a drain that runs, so you see where the driveway dips a little bit?
Uh, are you talking about?
Where that little curve in the driveway.
Oh, right, right here?
So there's a drain that runs there.
Right here, you're talking about?
Yep.
Okay.
Um, diagonally across the hole to the back of the property, and so if we ever had to access that, we'd have to.
Wait, it goes from here to where, here?
Nope, all the way to the back.
So it goes approximately here, straight back, this way?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's a drain buried under the ground?
Yeah.
Right there?
Mm-hmm.
That was one of the questions I had here.
If it's a, again, we're not, we're not engineers, we're not, that's, the shed could go right over it, it's not a.
No, I'm just thinking if we had to access it because it was overflowing, or if we had to change it, it would, you'd have to dig it all up, dig the gravel that we put down.
How wide is the drain?
Um, it's pretty big.
It's a 12-inch?
I think it's a 12, I think it's at least a 12-inch.
So it's.
Yeah, I mean, it looked big to me.
It's a 12-inch discharge one. Go around the shed, it's not a big deal.
Does anybody else have any other questions? I have a couple.
Is there a reason that you could not locate it, say, between where this, um, old rubber-made shed is and the proposed new shed? If you just draw a line between those two and had it somewhere equidistant, and that would put it significantly back from the property line on that side?
So the 50-foot stepback, so where my driveway ends, right there, um, the far top corner, yeah. It, it basically goes like diagonal, the 50-foot stepback line from my neighbor, a very slight diagonal. Yep. So it would have to be to the left, if I'm looking, pulling into the driveway to the left, and that's where my drain.
I saw this little thing where we were out there.
Yeah.
Right.
And so, and the hardship would just be because of the drain.
But the variance would be shorter, smaller, in, instead of 35, it would probably be like 15 or, no, wouldn't that be?
Oh, putting it back there, I, you know, we just thought, yeah, we just thought it was ideal, maybe just to put it away altogether. 'Cause that's like a wooded area and a tree fell on it and the doors fell off, so it was like, put it in a more open space.
Again, the shed is gonna be on blocks, correct?
Yes.
And, or, and/or gravel, like a shed company is coming to install it?
Yep.
Inky barn or whatever?
Barn or, yeah.
Yeah. So they put gravel down, move it, fix the pipe, put the pipe in a different spot. The pipe's not a hardship.
Okay.
At all.
Any other questions? I have just a couple questions. Um, thank you very much for allowing me to walk into the house, I really appreciate it. Um, one, one thing I noticed, and I drew a little map here, I, I know the shed's already on the site, yeah. I saw it in the rough site where it's just sitting now, it's not in permanently anywhere. It's somewhere over near that, the pink rubber-made structure.
Correct.
Kind of right now.
Yep.
Okay. My one question, and I did look at everything in the dimensions back here, but my one question was, when I looked at it and where it was sitting, I'm like, you know, that looks like a pretty doggone good spot to me, more or less over there, and it's less of a variance, you know, if it's on the other side there, I didn't go in. Uh, I think, that's, that's, is that 27, oh, how good are your eyeballs, ma'am, there is a number here. I think it's 27.7 to your pink rubber-made?
Correct. So I need another 25 feet.
Yeah, let's say you were 3 feet, 4 feet, 5 feet, but, yeah, yeah, maybe you would be at 30, 32, 33 feet if it were over there, which you might, it was just an idea. If it was over there somewhere situated roughly where it's at the temporary location now, um, would that be difficult or a problem? I didn't know, and I'm glad Commissioner Rushmeyer asked you about the drain, but the drain, even if, you said the drain's kind of coming out from about here. You could draw it in, please.
From right here, let's say.
And it goes.
Discharge is like from here.
Okay. So even if, like, it's roughly right here, let me, I'll use the.
And here we have pool patio, so.
E- e- even if it was, gee, you might even be able to get, if that's 27 there, 30, 33, let's say you could get the 40, you know, you could get another 7, 8, 9 feet, and it was out over here, you're only talking a 10-foot variance.
But my, this stepback line goes from here, this corner of the driveway to here.
Yeah, that, you.
Yeah.
It's, it's just an idea or a thought, you know, you might have.
Oh, but you're saying for a smaller variance.
Well, yeah, what I'm thinking is, there's a possibility, or even if, okay, so west is back this way and that's northwest, so if it's a little bit more this way, north and west on the property.
Well, another thing to consider is that lot, from what Mr. Pelso tells me, is not a buildable lot. So it's an empty lot, not.
The person back here?
There's no home there, it's just an empty lot. So he's told me that's not a building lot, it can never be built upon, whereas there is a family living here. So, for me, the lesser of the two evils is nobody's being bothered there. And he supports it, whereas, you know, it'd be closer to their property line with a home.
It was, it was just a question, you know, is it, is it possible? I did see roughly where, you know, it was laid out there before. Yeah, it looks good there and I did some measurement there, I had to watch out for the poison ivy that was over there, I saw that. Um, but it's, it's a possibility, if you, if you had to, and it might be less, it might be a 10-foot variance in a slightly different location, it's, it's possible. And the last question was, explain, uh, I need to explain at the beginning, please explain those hardships she told us about at the beginning.
So, to the left of the home, so all these are the steppe fields, again, anywhere very narrow stepback.
Yep. I think I drew them in, is this, as you said that before. The septic's right over here, right, that's septic.
Yeah.
Which is on the southern end of the property, right, kind of southeasty.
Um, and then that.
Oh, and it's actually all the way here, 'cause you have a 1,500 gallon septic tank right there, right? Okay. So that connects into here. So it's that, the backside of the property.
And then back here, we'll be putting out a patio that goes over there on the pool, and this is all wetland.
You draw that patio on again?
So basically, it's that whole piece.
Right here, they can see you go, it's in the back.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, and then, over here, we also have a buried propane tank. I mean, I think the stepback is also very narrow here, and it slopes down, and I have it on my phone.
Well, now, here's the line, here's the line right there.
That's a property line, but a 50-foot, I would still have to get a variance, 'cause the 50-foot stepback line actually goes into the pool.
So you've got the variance for the pool.
The pools are 30, and so that was, that was fine, but, see how it looks? We drew in the stepback, how narrow it is, so my patio goes all the way up here, buried propane tank there, all that canals up here. So I don't know if they're at the septic.
Can you see that? Would you like to show the other members that? Please.
Oh, sorry. So this is the, this is the stepback line around, so it's very narrow here, so here's where the septic holes are. All the canals, these are where your, and we have a very propane tank over here. So that's seeking out area, I mean, there, and our patio goes now from the end of the house, all the way around the pool. Basically, we're all, we're all just in the garage, so, there's a, a lot of patio. Just really dumb, basically.
Okay. So this is, this is probably the only, this area is what?
That's why we were thinking, rather than put it up against their properties and somebody lives there, and you put it towards the back, nobody lives there. Mr. Pelso was okay, like, we were like, would you mind, and he was like, no.
Would you mind pointing out some of the temporary locations it's in now, like basically?
Oh, yeah, so basically, it's right in front of this PVC.
That's the rubber-made, pink thing, it's right there, yeah, so it's.
Which is within the 50.
I don't know, it's somewhere right around in there.
Yeah.
Something like that. It's like a temporary location, we just set it. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you.
No, thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Madam Secretary here.
I do think I can help you.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah, I did, on Mr. Veece.
No, we're good, we read them. We're good, we read them, we went through this, alright. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in favor of the application. Hearing none. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to the application. Hearing none. Ms. Flores, you have the closing remarks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing on Z dash 23 dash 28.
So.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
All those in favor? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So at this time, um, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go into closed deliberations, it's open to public view. We talk as members amongst ourselves. So, I'd like to open the discussion on Z dash 23 dash 35. I'd like to take a motion to approve the application as presented.
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill, you're on, Miss McRae?
Yes, sir.
It's open discussion. This is the Figuero residence, two-car garage, 26 by 26, and the variance requests a structure to the right sideline of 25 feet.
There are hardships on the property, the question is whether they are sufficient such that it, it, I guess, it's almost like a confiscation of their rights to use the property. And the question is, does it rise to that level, right?
And you're talking about the well, the topography, and the wetlands in the back, and the slope, really, on that property.
And the existing garage is small. It can't, it doesn't fit that hard, so that's all.
I don't know, that's a hardship.
It's gotta be a.
Not a hardship, I'm sorry, it's, um, it's a re, yeah, it's inconveniences. Their, their car is fucked up, so.
No, I'm sorry.
I, I, I agree, I, I think it's, uh, I don't know if it's so much of a hardship than a convenience of putting, two garage doors, a bigger garage. I listened to Larry, I think what he made, he made sense of what he says, like, he's a force to the owners.
You mean turning it perpendicular on the side of the house rather than the straight in? That's what you're thinking about, or what?
No, I was thinking after we did that where it is and just extend it. Making it bigger.
The existing garage.
The existing, the existing garage, but still saying that the sun, it would block the sun, correct? And that's.
No, this is a tough one for me, 'cause I, it sounds like
I.
That there's no better place, really, to put it, that makes a lot of sense, and there are hardships on the lands, but
Sure.
Can they be overcome? Probably. Right? I mean, the bill and all that.
Yeah, it's, it's a possibility. Um, here's, here's how I see it, let's move it real slow, so, turn it in for us here. Um, okay, so we got, there's something south of the front of the house, which you didn't put garage in anyways. When you come up and, um, I really took into account what Commissioner Rushmeyer said, because it did make a lot of sense to me. I didn't really think about it before, but just when I went out with the property, the biggest thing that grabbed me was the topography. Where they were talking about, but they had their rock wall there, and, yeah, maybe over to the neighbor on the right side of the, which comes out of the driveway, it's a little bit less of a slope, there's still a slope, and then it's 45, 50, and I think they said it might even be more of a 50-degree angle in the back. So it's pretty doggone steep going back there. Um, so I think topography is a hardship on the property. The wetlands part, you know, it's, it's a hardship, it's pretty far from where they wanna do it there, the biggest thing is the topography. And the measurements that I took from the sideline to where they wanted to put it, um, I came up with 21 feet. I could clearly see where the side, sideline was there, and I measured to the house and then measured the distance out, but I think that it could be, if, even if it was going that way, it could, I think it could be a smaller, at least four feet smaller.
Including the overhang and all that?
I think so, yeah, this, this left sideline, or as I'm looking at it from the rear of the house, so this right here, um, where I measured out that 29 feet, and instead of, instead of 25, I think they can get 21 feet.
And then there's another 6 feet, right? They said that they left the 6 feet from the well, so that, because Larry said he could do it all over, so.
Yeah, I, yeah, I have a little, a, a little bit of a difference with Commissioner Rushmeyer, who I respect on the well. I did speak to Mr. Avery, and though the code says you can go right on top of it, you don't need any distance. Mr. Avery, I asked him, uh, in person, I said, you know, I know you don't have to do anything, what, what do you like? What do you like to have around a well? He goes, I like to have about 10 feet. That's just what he said. It's a, from the, the town sanitarian, that's just what he says, doesn't mean it is the code or anything like that. He likes to have a little bit of room. So the well, I think, could be possibly a hardship, although it's not really a code issue, I'm just going by, but what our sanitarian said to me, which was, he likes to have 10 feet, and I understand that, being a technician, you need room to work on things. But what Commissioner Rushmeyer said, you could, yeah, you could bury that thing right in the garage if you wanted to.
It's more for want and not a need, you say, it's, you know, you, you.
You think there's a different way to do it?
Yes. There are. I don't know, we never talked about the extension of the existing garage, to see if that could, you know, accommodate.
No, that's hypothetical, right?
That is hypothetical, yes, yes.
Commissioner Rushmeyer kind of spoke about that a little bit, and just taking it and bringing it out there, and that's where the light, sunlight situation came in that they, that they spoke about.
That might be an alternate, but, an alternate way of, uh.
Yeah.
But the neighbors are all, you know, there's no problem from the neighbors.
The neighbors have no problem with it at all?
Yes, yes, so we've.
I mean, I'm, I can probably go either way on this, because there are some hardships on it, but I also understand the other side of it too.
It's a tricky one.
I wanted to see what everybody else felt, everybody else felt.
Yeah, it is, it is kind of.
I think the topography, definitely 100% is an issue, is it the steepness in the back there? It might be more than, this, this part here, it could be more than 40 to 50 degree slope. It, it's pretty doggone sloopy back there. And you have that well, even though I see you built the garage around the top of it. I spoke to the sanitarian and he likes to leave 10 feet, but, you know, it could be 10 feet, you're inside a garage, you come in and you service it.
What do you think, Elijah?
Uh, for me, there are hardships, in my opinion. Um, I think if we try and use the standard that you can overcome some of the hardships, I don't know how many variances we would actually approve.
Right, that's fair.
Very true.
I don't think that's a legal standard.
Right.
Um, but a- as far as this specific case, I'm more leaning towards approving the variance.
Um, I agree with Mr. Rushmeyer that there probably are other options. I don't know that there are better options, but, um, there, there probably are other options, you can angle things and move things, but uh, for me, it meets at least my standard, in that there are, um, there are some. in that there are, there are some things that they would have to overcome. It's going to help them. It's not going to infringe on the neighbors. I'm not worried about granting it in perpetuity. And I think the only thing that I would possibly stipulate is that the new building not be any taller height-wise than the existing garage, because we don't have that information.
That's true. We don't.
Good, good point.
We do not have that information. I have another question for you. Would you be okay, is, in which your feeling was, because of the measurements that I took out there, dropping it from twenty-five to twenty-one feet, which I think fits, which is a little bit less of a variance? Four feet or your, the four feet doesn't make a difference.
I mean, four feet is negligible. I mean, if that's what the group wants, and we wanna move it four feet, that's fine. I don't know, the four feet really does much, but if it makes people feel more comfortable, I'm, I can believe it right there.
Mind if I ask Mr. Lali a question?
Sure.
Mr. Lali, if we were to put a stipulation on, on the height, how would we do that without knowing the exact height that it is now?
Well, in that zone, there's a height requirement anyway, because it's not attached to the house, so the accessory structures have to comply with the normal building height, which is thirty feet to the, you know, the occupied space.
So height's not an issue.
So, it's not.
And I'm secretary.
I feel that the existing garage could be extended.
To come this way, uh, from north, southeast, west. Come to the west.
I don't know. Does that look like it's attached to the house or their?
The existing one, the existing one is attached to the garage, to the house. Yeah, I could pull it if you wanted me to.
Yeah, the picture showed it, yes.
It is attached to the house. So when you come in the driveway, you come in, and you turn left into the garage. This is really like a two-car garage right here.
But they have to come for another variance, or did they?
If they, if they put it, basically lengthen it out the other way. If you measured that over.
The patio is there. Just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, she's.
The patio?
The existing setup is, is not set up for that.
So it would be butted against the patio?
Well, she's got.
Well, you have to take out the patio.
Yeah, the pool's here. It's got the patio all around it. You got the well, and then you see this, see this thing right here? That is the wall. That's a retaining wall because of that big slope, so that would have to be added there. I mean, they'd have to fill it in, backfill, whatever. I don't do that. It would have to come all the way like that. Ms. Min.
I, if we approve it, I wouldn't ask for the variance to change, because I think aesthetics is also important, yes.
Leave it as is. Leave it as is.
I think you have to make it look good. The neighborhood is pretty, you know, if they're, if they're consciously trying to, then the variance by a couple of feet here and there is not going to do.
I, I clearly see the, the topography. The well, especially, you know, if they're going the other way, then we're coming over closer to it, too. I understand what Mr. Avery say. I'm, I'm okay with it as it is. I'm inclined to approve it.
Yeah, me too.
Is everybody ready to vote?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. You already had a question, I did. We already had a second. All those in favor of approving Z dash twenty-three dash thirty-five, that is the Carrera residence, two-car garage, it's twenty-six by twenty-six, and that would be a twenty-five-foot right sideline variance, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye. Is that unanimous?
Mm-hmm.
That is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving on to our second application. I'd like to take a motion to approve Z dash twenty-three dash twenty-eight. That is Damon and Amy Ayala residence, ten log and trail lane, and that is the place is shown on the property, twelve by sixteen. And it's a structure to the left sideline, ten-foot variance request, structure to right sideline, forty-foot variance request, and forces in the front yard. All right, I'd like to take a motion to approve that, isn't it?
So moved.
Can I have a second, please? All right, let's open discussion. Mr. Briggs, you're on this one, sir.
Well, you had suggested that the shed could potentially go to the north side of the house.
Yeah.
In an area that wouldn't require a variance, and it's not obvious to me that that wouldn't work.
It wouldn't be in the front yard anymore.
Correct.
Definitely wouldn't be in the front yard. That was, that was a question I had there. The only thing really close to it is this well. We've gone over the well thing. We're not really worried about that, and it has some clearance.
This one seemed like it needed a survey, because everything was kind of off, and we were kind of guestimating the whole time, right?
Well, that, yeah, that was this right sideline here. Do you have anything else on this one?
Well, I guess, given the fact that there could be a viable alternative.
And we're not sure of the dimensions.
And we're not sure of the dimensions. It would seem to me it would make sense either to, either to not approve this particular request and ask them to perhaps come back with a survey, so we could more properly evaluate whether, whether there's a viable alternative to this or not. That would be my thought.
I agree with Mr. Briggs.
I agree. I, I think, to me, this sounded like it's two hundred and thirty feet away, the neighbors are all good, so I'm actually okay with the existing proposed, just, you know.
I, I'm kinda thinking like you, because I went out there and measured. It's actually, if my measurements are right, and I'm probably pretty close, it's two hundred and seventy-nine feet of the driveway. Like, when you're standing at the tip-top of the driveway. Something may be off a little bit, but I'm, I, when I went there to visit the property, I stopped roughly right near there. And from the top here, I could see my van, but it's off to the right, so there's no way in the world, even because of the distance. I think in the wintertime, nobody'd be able to see it.
And that's in the front, you're talking?
Yeah, that's the, the one thing that it's in the front yard. Here's, let me tell.
Put the lot to the right.
Okay, here's, here's a few things that I see, and, and I think there's alternatives, too. But there is a unique shape of the property, and where I saw the uniqueness of it was, it's just a weird property line where the neighbor, this is like ten feet off their driver or whatever, there's a rock, and like, that's where this point comes out to there. It's just, it's kind of weird. There's a unique shape. There's heavy wetlands in the back. Heavy, 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 heavy wetlands. Yeah, we don't know exactly where they are, but the G I S shows it. I went out there and looked at it, and I just basically chicken-scratched in here, and I'm probably pretty close of where I saw the wetlands on the property. So forget about, that's on the northwestern side of the property. You can't do anything there. There's septic. I pulled the ASBIL out on it, and their septic system is really on this southern quarter of property. They got, they got a tank there, and they got multiple fears, so forget about it. You can't do anything over on that side of the property. So you really only got the right side of the property, which was the one idea that I suggested. Or where it's at there, and we, we did have a couple of letters from the neighbors that weren't opposed to it. So I could go either way on this. I, I really don't have a problem where it's at, just because of the distance of it, and it's so far back.
We have a lot.
And there's, and there's hardships.
From the, the, the neighbors on the east side.
Yeah.
You have those two letters? I think I have one. One was from, um, what is it?
Twelve.
Twelve logging trail, so that's right next to a neighbor.
And the other one, I don't see a.
I have eight, uh, six logging trails.
Eighty-four, no.
I've got six, and I've got twelve logging trails.
Twelve and six, yes.
So if we look at those, do they have them on here? Yeah, we'd have to pull it up. You want me to pull it up? You have to tell me which two neighbors those are. All right. You know what's easier? Let me Google her. One second. It should have it in the asterisk, so it should be easy to find.
I think you have to turn the TV on as well.
Oh, yeah, that'd be good. Thank you. It's one of those places. All right, so, fix this out. Now, that's right. This is ten line, yeah, the property. So zero. O G G I N. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't know where it's from.
L O G G I N G.
It's bad, huh?
Yeah. No, it's all right. Um, ten.
One, zero, L.
L O G G I N.
Logging trail, project. Okay, sorry. All right. So let's go in. Can I show me the house numbers here? Um, what were the numbers again? It was twelve?
Twelve and six.
Yeah, I think the numbers went up, starting from, oh, there's the circle right there. So they're ten.
I would think the next one would be twelve or eight.
I'll bet you that's twelve. Do you think this, last one right here you're talking about?
Yeah. Which one is that?
I think it's gonna be, well, that's their house.
Oh, that's the one, okay.
Yeah, and unfortunately, this thing doesn't let you go right down to the road. It doesn't give you the road view. But if you looked up this driveway, it's basically, it's here, uh, where's the driveway at? It's, it's far.
Yeah, it's very woodier, it's, yeah. It seems like it's so wooded, there's hardly any visibility or, you know.
Right, right here, I think it is. This goes, this little guy goes way up, and it's somewhere. Yeah, 'cause that number on the right side, it might be a little off. If we did, if we were to approve it, I believe, Mr. Lali, we'd have to have an A two survey anyways, correct?
Well, it's completely correct.
Yeah, we'd have to have an A two survey for it anyways, so we would get the exact dimensions on that. That would help out. Any other discussion? Everybody ready to vote? All right, Mr. Briggs. Okay. Your motion, your second. So, all those in favor of approving Z dash twenty-three dash twenty-eight, Damon and Amy Ayala residence, ten logging trail road, and that is for a structure to left sideline, ten-foot variance request, and a structure to right sideline, forty-foot variance request, and article, this is structure front yard, this is technically the front yard, article three dot four dot A dot three dot B, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. One, two, three, yeah. All those opposed, say nay.
But Ellen wants to come down and have a survey.
Oh, nay with, you're like, you're nay with prejudice? You should ask that. Just.
Yeah, without prejudice, right?
Yeah, we have to say nay with, without prejudice, so.
Nay without prejudice.
Without prejudice.
Okay, so the motion fails. Three, two, two, but it's without prejudice. And Mr. Lali, you can put your, your statement, I said, right? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to take a motion. So I'm gonna have, we need to have five on this. All right, Mr. Rushmeyer, you're on this. I'm gonna ask, um, Paul Ray around. Mr. Would you serve him for?
Sure. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Temple, uh, you know, it's gonna, uh, uh, Commissioner Temple. So we're gonna have one, two, three, four, five. All right. So. All right, I'd like to take a motion to, let's see, I'd like to take a motion to approve application Z dash twenty-three dash forty-three. That would be Erica Flores and Fabio Igurito residence. I hope they didn't mess it up. If that, you got it right, thank you, now. It's two eight Crosswoods Road, and that is to place a shed twelve by sixteen on the property, and that is a request, uh, structure to rear lot line, uh, variance requested of thirty-five feet. Required dimension is fifty, variance requested is thirty-five feet. I'd like to take a motion to approve the application as submitted.
Submitted.
I want a motion. Are you, you already?
Submitted.
Okay, so, I want your second.
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Who would like to go first? What question?
You know, the, the, the lot behind being empty and not buildable, um, either ways, there's going to be setback, you know.
You mind if I just ask the, uh, someone enforcement also just to verify that?
Sure.
Uh, and I believe that that lot is not buildable directly behind the house, as far as you know?
As far as I know, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, I agree with that, that if you were to move it, which we did think of a few different ways, there's still setbacks, she says, and this is probably second to that.
Nobody's going back there, and not gonna be staring at it.
Nobody's staring at it, yes. Me too. I'm busy with it.
I agree with you.
Oh, I, I agree.
Commissioner, come on.
I also agree. Uh, similar to what I said before, I think that there are some hardships that were stated. I think there probably are also some alternatives, uh, but I think the hardships are enough. It's not obstructing anyone's view. I think we had the letter, the person owns the lot, uh, also said, this is no problem.
So what the hardships that you see on there is the septic on the outside of the property, and unique shape of property where the pin comes in the back from that vacant lot.
I think even the shape of the property, like number one, being that there's already, you know, like we were saying, the.
It cuts back in.
Hole is, and, you know, the pore just barely cuts in there. That's exactly what you were saying.
Yeah, unique, unique shape of property. And, you know, kind of the well, I see, too, I agree with Commissioner Rushmeyer, the, I don't think drainage. No, it's a big deal. But I, I do see the hardships on it, which would be the septic, the topography, and kind of the location of the well. So I'm inclined to approve the initial motion.
Yeah, no, I, I think that there are plenty of alternatives that are viable. As far as the lot in the back, that's an empty lot. If you looked in the future, ten years, and a neighbor purchased that property, added it to their property, knocked the house down, wanted to build, reset the property now.
They're gonna be staring.
Now you're looking at the guy's shed. That's why you need to think about the variance, is going to the property that you're granting the variance to. And the fact that it's an empty lot now, that may change in ten years. And so.
Other question for you, Commissioner. Would, uh, would you be more comfortable with it if it had, and you're much better at it than the rest of us, if it had some shielding in the back, some trees or bushes?
Probably, because there's viable places to put it where she doesn't need any variance. It can be moved to positions where there are no variances necessary.
I was thinking about possibly, like, the location I was talking about a little bit.
Yes, it could be put in there without a variance.
That's even at the driveways, but we would suggest, um, we're looking at that.
Yeah, so when I went there, uh, the, the shed, it's just in a temporary location. They dropped it off and they delivered it, but it's in front of, you know, the pink rubber made that she was talking about. It's kind of in front of that pink rubber made. That rubber made's at twenty-seven, seven. It was now three foot in front of it, so called thirty, thirty-one feet already. But there's room, so the pink rubber made thing is there. There, there's room if they're heading, uh, towards the west and south of the property. I, I do, I have to agree with Commissioner Rushmeyer that there are alternative locations where you probably can get it in there and don't need any variance, or way smaller variance. But I, I think there are options on it. It's, I'm kind of torn on this, because.
So the, the lot being not buildable, is that not something, yeah, I, I'm taking that as a.
You want me to explain that thing again, so I can change?
So if, if an adjacent piece of property purchased that unbuildable lot and combined the two parts, and decided they wanted a bigger, big, build a bigger house,
And put the house back.
Now it's, now it's a different lot.
And you're staring at possibly the back of it, where we get. And you're staring at possibly the back of it, where we'd give a variance in perpetuity to put it there.
Right.
When there might be alternate locations for it. I totally understand, I understand. Um, I tend, I could've gone either way on this, but going out there and looking at it, knowing that there is a possibility of another location that may not need any variance at all, or a much smaller one, and I'm talking about, you know, we're kind of near the pink Rubbermaid, I'll just call it that for now.
And that existing structure cannot be reproduced, right? You've seen it, that's not.
I wouldn't keep it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I.
But we don't know, we have, we don't know if there's.
Yeah, the applicant did say that they were going to delete that.
Non-conforming.
Right. Yeah, it was, it's there now, it appears in my, in our questions that we ask the applicant, she should, she did say, we're getting rid of that. So, that's gone and out of there anyways.
And that's another fifteen feet, it would need another fifteen feet anyway, if it was right there, if it was twenty-seven.
Yeah, yeah.
It was twenty-seven, well, where it's at now, where they temporarily put it, probably another three, you know, to the left of that, so it's at like thirty-one, give or take.
And, um, didn't, didn't the applicant also say that, um, the neighbors to the right-hand side?
Mm-hmm.
Um, if, if we were to place the shed at the end of driveway, it would be visible to see those neighbors that are, that are living at this time. The other property is not buildable at this time, but this one is, you know, occupied by people. So, I don't know, I'm, I'm kind of torn here, because I'm thinking, what is the better, or, you know, of the two choices?
Yeah, I know. If, I, yeah, I'm, I'm torn on this too. I do see some hardships on it, the septic, the unique shape of property, the location well. But I, I do think, I do agree with Commissioner Rushmire, that there's a possibility to have it located either no variance at all, or very small variance, and if they did come back to us, let's say, let's say for some reason, we, we happen to disapprove it today, we could do that without prejudice, and they could come back, you know, with another plan in a month, that's an idea too. But I think there's a possibility, you could always, if you're worried about the neighbor on that side, you could say, you know what? We're gonna, let's, let's put some trees there, if you worry about it. So. Does there any further discussion?
I'm good.
Madam Secretary.
I'm good. Yeah.
Everybody's there? Okay. Everybody's there as well. Would, um, I'll ask before we vote, would anybody have any opposition if this were not to be approved, to, uh, disapprove it without prejudice? Would anybody, would everybody be okay with that?
Yeah.
Meaning it wouldn't have to wait six months?
I know, yeah.
All right. All those in favor of approving Z dash twenty-three dash forty-three, um, Erica Flores and Fabio Figurito residence, um, and that is to place a shed twelve by sixteen for a structure to the rear lot line, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I'm gonna say nay without prejudice, are you okay with that? Just nay?
Just nay.
Just nay, all right. So, we have three, four, and two opposed, so the motion fails. Thank you very much. Okay.
I would say.
All right, um, just no old business, new business. Um, Madam Secretary, Vice Chairman Temple, do you take care of the?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Lisa, I didn't take care of it, I thought we would, you wanted me to discuss it here.
Oh.
But yes, it was just a one-line, it was perfect, right to the point.
Okay, do you mind, please?
Absolutely. If you have any questions, Mr. Wally.
Give me a call, I'm on it.
Thank you so much.
Have a good evening, have a good evening, thank you very much. So, that's all done, take your care.
Right, and, um, I'll put it in where, um, the day straining administering oaths,
Mm-hmm.
uh, all witnesses are hereby notified that any false statement made to the public servant under, under oath is punishable as a class A misdemeanor pursuant to Connecticut general statute thirty-three A dash one five, one fifty-seven B. And, um, you may notice that there were a couple of changes for the membership, and, um, I will make those two, instead of, um, the first Monday in October.
Well, that's the next thing I was gonna bring up.
Right, it was November. And, um, the last line, the last sentence line in this, uh, paragraph, it's four years as opposed to six years. So, I will make those changes, thank you.
All right, um, we do, we're gonna have to vote on that, but I just wanted to bring it up, something that we didn't notice, that, for whatever reason, we missed it. Um, I got the bylaws to write up here, just so we can see on here. We just, I think we spent all our time on the, the difficult stuff, and just missed this, but right under membership.
Right, I just said that.
Yeah.
November, and I will change that to four.
Should be.
It would be Monday in Nov- in November.
Tuesday.
I'm sorry, Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday in October, and this should be a four years.
Right.
All right, so, um, we're gonna, we'll, we'll need to vote on it, even though it's small. So, all those in favor, well, we gotta take a motion, we're just, we're gonna go around, go around fixing that.
Well, you need to see what the alternates are.
Yes, um, who's last, you're last.
Yeah.
Mr. Perez, will you be seated for this vote?
Certainly.
Thank you, sir. Okay, um, I'll, I'll just state it out.
Okay, yes.
All right, um, I'd like to take a motion to amend the ZBA bylaws, section five, one to third line down where it says, yeah, under membership. Third line down where it says, first Monday in October, change the first Monday to first Tuesday in November. And the last line, term of office for each regular member of said board members shall be, it says six, I'd like to amend it to say four. Do I have a second on the amendment?
I second that.
All right, I made the amendment. Secretary's here. Okay, so, all those in favor of changing that, fixing the ZBA bylaws, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. And thank, thank both of you for putting that statute in there, I appreciate it. All right, next one. Um, this one, I could go over it, or we could table it, but this has been on here, the informal discussion has been on here for, I don't know, two or three or four different meetings now. But this is, uh, it says waiting on opinion from town attorney, this is a discussion of Connecticut statute, eight dash five through eight dash six, um, members speaking during closed deliberations. Now, I remember that I'm newer, or were newer than some people that have been on here before, but the previous chairman had no problem with, um, members, alternate, alternate members speaking during closed deliberations. That's how I learned, from the very beginning, that's just how it was. I did look up the statute on it, and I did follow up with Attorney Schellenberger. And it's weird, if you look in the statutes, I can pull it up here and we can read it, but in one statute, it says alternate members precluded from, uh, closed deliberations. And then the next one, there was a citation of statute, a suit or something that went through, that alternate members speaking during that didn't make a difference. So, it's a, one of these type of situations. Um, I did, um, besides Attorney Schellenberger, um, I called up, I said, let me call a lawmaker, see if I can, let's get their gist on it. Uh, so I called our state senator on it, Senator Harding, and I had him look at both the statutes on there, and he saw both these sides of that, and he says, you probably, this is his opinion, he says, probably agrees with Attorney Schellenberger that you're better off safe than sorry in that situation. I don't really like it.
Meaning not to be inclusive?
Not, not to be inclusive, which I don't, I don't particularly like, I'm talking in the closed deliberations part and unseated alternate. Yeah, I don't particularly like that. Schellenberger said, no, you can't do that. Land use office says, no, you can't do that. I prefer, and even when it's with the Senator Harding, I wish you'd say, no, I shouldn't bring him up on here. Uh, he's like, look, I see where you're coming from, the more people that are involved in the discussion, the better it can be, and, and, you know, the more fair and everything on the outcome. But he also did see the other side of it, Attorney Schellenberger, the town attorney said, hey, it could be a reason for somebody saying, hey, I don't, I don't like that, did that happen, appeal it, or whatever it is. Um, one, and the other thing that Attorney Schellenberger was talking about, we had two different times. One of them was a January meeting, I forget, but a couple of regular members were just a few minutes late, five, six, seven minutes late to a meeting, and the chairman, I think one was Carl, and one was like when I was chairman, had to seat an alternate member in his place, but only missed maybe four, five, six minutes.
That happened to me too.
Yeah, uh, there was a couple of members that happened to, and I said, what about a situation like that? And still, you're still discussing the same exact application. She goes, well, that you're gonna have to do on a case-by-case basis, just talking about a regular member, and this is Attorney Schellenberger, you have to take it on a case-by-case basis. It, it's, it's a difficult one, did they hear ninety-nine percent of the application in the part of it? And that's on a, you know, a chairman's or whoever, you know, whoever's running the meeting at the time's basis, and you'd say, hey, you know what? You only missed a couple of minutes of it, speak during it, so. That's, I'm just passing on.
But the legality is, is more, I don't understand that.
Is it possible for an alternate to have a conversation, be part of this conversation currently?
Oh, this one? Yeah, we're, we're in open, yeah, we're in.
So, one of the things that I think is vital for the board is certain members within the committee may have different expertise.
Yeah, I agree.
And the committee members are then not even able to discuss amongst each other about questioning what that expertise is. So, you're eliminating a resource for the board by not allowing everybody to participate in those deliberations.
I totally agree.
And it's been, it's been my very longstanding on this board, that that was, in a lot of cases, crucial.
Helpful.
And, and helpful.
I agree with you.
Well, it's also, um, it seems to me a distinction without a substantive difference, because, for example, you take tonight, Larry had several observations to make.
Right.
In the open part, that certainly affected my thinking about
Yes, well.
different applications, uh, and so, even if Larry said nothing during the closed session, his, his influence would still be felt regardless.
During the public hearing.
The idea that one, in one part of the meeting, one is free to participate, and in the other part, one is not, does not actually safeguard anything in, I mean, if the idea is, oh, we don't wanna have, uh, the commissioners who are currently making a decision influenced by the comments of the alternates, that's, it's a silly distinction, because it doesn't have that effect, uh, in, in actuality.
I totally agree with you. Yeah, because if you had, if you listen to the public hearing, right, like, uh, tonight, I was just lucky that you were on the particular application, you were voting on it, and I could follow up with you on a question, but uh, an alternate member says something during a public hearing.
Right.
That you might have a follow-up question on a closed deliberation, now you can't ask them that.
Right.
I agree with you totally, a hundred percent. I'm a.
Given the conversation about the, uh, open lot, I mean.
Right. I could only ask, really, Mister, you know, we can get help from the staff or the attorney.
The other comment tonight specifically about the drain pipe, it's illegal to pipe runoff into somebody else's property.
Yeah.
You pipe that line all the way to somebody's back property line, that's illegal. So, that pipe should've been moved to begin with. And that kind of conversation can't happen in closed deliberations, if I'm not allowed to speak.
Yeah, I agree with you totally. Would, um.
Didn't we change, 'cause we, uh, like Larry was saying.
In the bylaws?
Well, no, not in the bylaws, but we used to, always, everybody could talk.
Forever.
I think we stopped because, I think it was Rochelle.
Rochelle.
It started with Rochelle, and then the, the new land use director said something to, I remember Larry, I think it was the first thing she ever said to you. We were talking, and I kind of looked over, said, I don't wanna get in trouble on this. Um, it was.
Apparently, there was a, a suit that someone brought, uh, at least that's what was reported, that somebody brought a successful suit against, uh, a zoning board decision, not this one. And part of the argument in the suit was that the zoning board was unduly influenced by the comments.
By an unseated alternate that was speaking during the closed deliberations.
That, I mean, that was referenced in this discussion, as part of the rationale for this distinction. But, but it's a little bit like a cover-your-butt kind of, uh, rule, it seems to me.
But I guess my point was that if that's what the law is, we may not like it, but we don't really have that.
Well, I want to, does everybody mind if I?
But she didn't know what the, she said you could go either way.
Does it, did the attorney weigh in, uh, completely? Do we have to accept, I mean, so your point's all taken, and that's it?
Well, attorney's point of view is just an attorney's point of view. Well.
Well, we've got the attorney, we've got Rochelle.
I think if the attorney says we can, we can't.
Yeah, but she didn't say it differently, she said, you could go either way.
Well, on, on a, uh, regular member that happened to be a few minutes late in the public portion, and they, and even though you had another person seated, they could still speak, she said, that's kind of a chairman's discretion type of thing. Uh, but the alternative.
I just don't wanna be doing legal research right now.
No, I bet you.
I think you're gonna do, and I'm gonna shut that down.
I, I mean, I agree with what everybody else said, that I think it's much more valuable for us to have more voices.
The room table, I agree, I agree.
Yes, but I also think we're kind of just spinning our wheels, because we're not gonna change the law. And if Rochelle told us, don't do it, and the land use director's saying, not a good idea, and nobody else is definitively saying, yeah, go for it, and everybody else is just saying, ah, we're just gonna kind of kick this can down the road, and not say yes or no, then it just has to be a no for now.
We're bringing, and I.
But Schellenberg didn't say that, she was.
Well, she said no on the alternates, and discretion of the chairman, depending how long they were late for regular elections.
The law is the law, I mean, what?
Well, it's.
How could she not give us, you can't, or you could?
Because there's two different citations, there's one citation that said, can't, and then there's another citation that said it didn't make a difference. I was gonna pull that up, but we don't wanna go through that now. Does everybody mind if I ask the zoning officer?
I have an email right here, and I pulled up from, uh, Rochelle Hodson, that was sent to you and Carl and me on April twenty-fourth of this year. Alternates can participate during the public hearing phase of the proceeding, but once deliberations begin, alternates not seated cannot vote or participate in deliberations. Comedy versus zoning board appeals, one twenty-seven Connecticut, uh, appeal six-six-nine, Weiner versus, you know, Milford zoning commission. Once deliberations begin, voting alter remains so, even if full members return and process. And that was from Rochelle, and again, sent to you, myself and Carl on April twenty-fourth.
I'm sure I got it, I'm sure I got it.
And that's your case, Mr. Perez?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on that?
Okay.
So, if anybody, if anybody wants me to ask for another thing somewhere else, I'll be more than happy to do it.
You could ask for clarification, it's, it's statute, I think it was.
Yeah, I, under eight-five and eight-six, there was those two citations, and they did seem ambiguous to me. I, I pointed those out to Attorney Schellenberger, and I think she was thinking to err on the side of caution, it must've been because of that, it took her case. I'm gonna look at that email.
I mean, there's state laws.
There is state law.
But the other one, at least there's some discretion on. If somebody's a few minutes late. I suppose, in terms of the, whether it's a gray, grayness, and I guess, the two options, one might be that the chairman, with this infinite wisdom, call upon one of the alternates for their opinion or thought about something along the line, whether he's saying, in which case the alternate is not weighing in as a full commissioner member, but simply someone who's articulating a particular concern or issue, whether it has to do with, uh, you know, a non-buildable property, or something like that. I guess the other option might be to say during the open session, there could be some discussion. I mean, it's in effect what sort of happens when they're asking questions, if there's in effect a sort of discussion, you get a sense of what each person's general meaning was, just by virtue of the question, you know, so I guess that's another way to stay within the letter of the law, but still allow some latitude for, that's something.
That's one of the, that's one of the reasons why we had to score a close part of the hearing, I said, does anybody have anything, you know, I think, 'cause I know. Thank you very, very much. Um.
Can we seat everybody?
Okay.
I mean, can we seat everyone, like, like our alternates? Because you, I remember Lisa, when we first came, you said, you're, you're.
Well, because I used to be an alternate.
In any communication, and I thought, well, is it not included, of course? You know, it's the meeting of the minds.
Yes.
So, can't we all be seated? No, you just said that.
It's five, yeah, the law is five. The law is five.
All right, so the, the law's clear on that.
We can actually have a public hearing with four, but we have to get permission from the applicant, if for some reason. but for some reason, everybody was outset, and we have only four of us, so if you still had it, we'd have to get permission. Am I correct?
And has to be unanimous.
Four's gotta be unanimous, right.
And, and the applicant has the opportunity to continue to the next meeting if they don't want to.
Right. If they said, oh, there's only four, that's the next one, you have to be there. But you really, applicants are entitled to five members. This next one, this is a quick one, I think it's gonna be fun. I just had an idea, and I just wanted to run it by everybody, be really fast. We had our very first, everybody knows, when we, when we first got in here, you got sworn in, you got handed, uh, Nina handed us a two-hundred-and-fifty-two penny book and said, good luck. So training and learning the job is very, very difficult. So I had an idea, since Commissioner Temple did such a phenomenal job in the training last session. I wanted to see if we could put various, and it's not so much for us, I'm thinking about ZBA's ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road from now, but would anybody mind, if I suggested, and I'm sure there would be Dan and IT to put on that, that I could put little links, you know, on our ZBA, we only got, I don't know, five or six links in there now. But if we put a link in there to ZBA training, and on that link, you just, you know, we put on there where it's at, like, uh, Commissioner Temple's, was it the seven-ten-twenty-three meeting, uh, whatever those two cases, it was seven minutes. She, she covered two cases in seven minutes and thirteen seconds, started in an hour and ten minutes, and ended in an hour and seventeen. But I wanted to put a link in there for maybe other training sessions that we'll have on next Monday and after. Uh, but I'd like to put training in there for future ZBA members to, hey, so we didn't have to just willy-nilly search around, how do I, how do I learn ZBA? Does anybody have-
Yeah, but we already went through that, 'cause we have sessions we have to, uh, we have to go to, so you could get on, you could get on, uh, what is it?
Esco.
Yeah, Esco.
Or West, West Con clear.
I mean, I had, how many hours of training?
Yeah, I know, we had the, the mandatory one, lasted two years.
And there is one for ZBA, so why would we, it's mandatory that you do that, but I have no problem with putting the link.
Yeah, what I was think-
I'm more-
Yeah, what I was thinking is this, so like, let's say, we had a link on there, and it had three training sessions, it had one from, uh, a couple of cases that were covered by a commissioner. Another one might have a link to a video training class at Esco. Another one might have another link to another training session, but it doesn't mean we have to do it, it just means later on down the road, if somebody's, you know, turns out to Google and say, how do I learn how to, you know, do ZBA?
Do you think that they would go on the website and just look at that?
The only thing is, these cases that I discussed are someday potentially moved or overturned, you know, whatever.
Yeah.
So I, that's the only thing, I mean, I, I think, like we say, more information is better than less, so that's a case fine.
It would, it wouldn't harm anybody, so.
You could all have to go on there and click the training link.
I would tee here, if I would tee here, wants to do it.
Yeah, link is a link, copy, paste, and name it. So everybody's okay with that, we have, anybody saying, I don't think I have to vote on that? Everybody's okay?
I don't know.
That's administrative, I think that's enough. Okay. Uh, everybody saying, would you like to make a favor of the session?
Would they make a motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second to adjourn?
Please.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.